Call the meeting in the order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is roll call.
Honorable Mayor Lindell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Jeff Morford.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Sashow.
Here.
Councilmember John Kaper.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Boyette.
Here.
Councilmember James Parks.
Here.
All right, next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and they must sign in on the sheet next to the podium and address the council from the podium. We cannot take any action on that. Anybody wish to speak?
I'm Richard Lapp and I'm with Bicycle Adventure here in Fort Morgan Bicycle Store. And I see a problem out there that the city's going to have to address. And I'm not aware of anything that they've already thought of, but manufacturers, Amazon, all them, when you buy an e-bike or you buy a scooter, there's a recommendation, no one under the age of 16 operate that vehicle. We have on the streets of Fort Morgan, running up and down the streets, running in the alleys, running on the sidewalks, eight, 10, 12-year-old kids on e-bikes treating them as motorcycles. There's not a pedal one that they're trying to do. They've got the throttle and they're weaving in and out of people. They're causing older people to get out of the way. And I think that is something that we, you as a city, needs to address. These scooters, some of them will go 45 mile an hour. And they're whipping up and down, they're whipping in and out of traffic. A lot of these people that drive the scooters and these e-bikes are people that have lost their driver's license because of drunk driving, because they can't afford insurance, they can't, they're not responsible for theirs, for themselves. So they could get an e-bike and they can be an automobile without any restrictions at all from the city, from the state, or anybody. And I think that's a problem the city needs to look into because it's going to have to be addressed, or the city's going to be facing a big lawsuit. Now, one recommendation I have for the city to put the liability back on the person that is riding the bike is to create bike paths, independent of our city streets. We need to create bike paths to Cargill, Maprino, the new place out there, all the schools, all the city parks. Then when they go downtown, we need to create some sort of bike corral where they could put their bike in that corral and where it's going to be safe. And then they can walk up and down Main Street for two blocks, which is not only good exercise, it's just safe for everybody that, you know, has to face their bicycle riding or motorcycle riding, or whatever you want to call it, because they aren't pedaling. There's several different bicycles. Class one is a bicycle, is a pedal assist that goes up to, the pedal assist up to 20.5 mile an hour. Class two is a pedal assist that will, with the throttle, that will go, and the throttles, none of the bike, none of the bikes are set from the factory with the throttle over 20.5 mile an hour. And in order to get the 30, 40 mile an hour, they've got to mess with the computer, which they do. And then the class three is a pedal assist bicycle, which is pedal assist up to 20.28 mile an hour, but it's pedal assist only. There's no throttle. If you aren't pedaling, the bike does not move. So there's all sorts of different ways that these people are getting by. And my own self, as an owner of a bike shop and as a bicycle rider, I think the throttle on the bicycle is not necessary. I got an e-bike. I could pedal in my low eco mode up to 28 mile an hour. But when do I do 28 mile an hour? Most of the time it's downhill. Because, you know, you really got to pedal fast and hard to get 28 mile an hour on a bicycle, no matter if it's got help or not. So anyway, that's what I wanted to talk about tonight, and I hope the city might take some action, and I'd be willing to help do whatever. But we need to create some bike paths to put these bikes on the bike path instead on the city street and the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Richard. Anybody else wish to address counsel? All right, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the August 19th City Council regular meeting. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you, Your Honor. The minutes are in your pocket as presented.
All right. Does anybody have any corrections or additions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution to accept the minutes of the August 19th, 2025 City Council regular meeting.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Jim Parks, second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty. Next is recognition of the business of the month for September. Sandy.
Good evening. It was 2020, the year in which many small businesses had to pivot or shut their doors. Brothers Monaco and Eric Corio grew up in the business world due to their father's Main Street storefront business. This wasn't the first time in the 20-plus years of retail operation that the Corio family and other similar small businesses had been confronted with a multitude of unexpected and trying issues. However, the unprecedented turbulent times emphasized growing challenges such as diminishing customer base, lack of awareness by potential new customers, and the inability to communicate and market operations in new ways for many. What the siblings also learned over two decades of working at their father's store were the self-motivation needed to take risks in the marketplace, an aggressive and creative work ethic, and strong leadership qualities in order to stay relevant. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to announce that Inceptions Media has been selected as this month's Business of the Month recipient for its valuable contributions to our community. Each month, this distinction is given to a Fort Morgan business that excels in such areas as pride in their business, top-notch customer service, operational growth, active involvement in area organizations and programs, and community contributions that assist in creating a better quality of life. Fort Morgan native Monaco Corio originally embarked on a 13-year welding and construction career, learning and acquiring such skills as working with customers and clients to meet their needs, organization and scheduling prowess, as well as networking and building relationships. His brother Eric headed off to college at UCCS for media production, where he became proficient at filming and development of social media ads and website design. The two entrepreneurs recognized that the changing environment for businesses created an opportunity to help those in their community learn to grow and adapt. Inceptions Media formed in March 2021 and set up their physical space at 814 West Platt Avenue. They remodeled the interior to make room for additional offices that now employ Ivan, their video editor, and Andrea, who is their staff graphic designer. They also remodeled the structure's lower level and moved the recording studio to its own area soon afterwards. The studio serves as a location for their free podcast productions, which have expanded, which have experienced, sorry, over 600,000 views on YouTube since the inception of their recordings. Many of the podcasts explore business-related topics, as well as offer insights into various topics affecting business operations. When the duo originally founded Inceptions Media, they produced a lot of videos for weddings and special events. However, as time went on, they recognized what their unique niche market should be focused on: industry contractors, trades, and blue-collar business owners, and helping them grow their companies through video and digital marketing efforts. As Monaco notes, if you're not online, you don't exist. If they can't find you, it's like you don't exist. This is the field where they have inside knowledge, a comfort level, and connections. In fact, Monaco is still active in the construction field with his other company, 3C Construction. The online reviews of satisfied customers have been outstanding, resulting in a perfect five-star rating on Google with such comments as, "Monaco and Eric have been great to work with. Both are very professional, and each one of them brings a different dynamic to the table with each of their skill sets." If you are looking to add local talent to your marketing strategy for your business, I highly recommend getting in touch with Inceptions Media to get your marketing plan in motion. Ryan Gonzalez adds, "I'm glad I found this company. They did a really great job doing my videos, and the turnaround time was great. Not to mention, the pricing is competitive and very reasonable. Monaco and Eric are great to work with, and they definitely know what they're doing. For all your video needs, I recommend Inceptions Media." And Logan Nestor also emphasizes price and quality by commenting, "The vision and creativity they have is unmatched with any other media I've used. They've been extremely fair on price and willing to work with me, which is something I haven't seen a lot of. If you're looking for high-quality content from high-quality people, then this is your media crew to use." The Inception Media business owners are fluent in English and Spanish, which helps their clients market to several different audiences, and they're willing to travel throughout the area and state to connect and produce high-quality on-location content. Monaco serves on the Morgan County Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors, and Inceptions Media was recognized earlier this year as its Investor of the Year. The business played a key role in MCEDC's Roots 76 Workforce Development Project and offered its video production skills to local businesses interested in producing employment and hiring video content aimed at younger generations. Monaco has also been known to assist the Small Business Development Center with sharing business and leadership advice with peer businesses and startups. He is a graduate of the Leadership Program of the Rockies, which trains emerging leaders with practical skills to bring solutions to community top challenges, as well as providing tools for entrepreneurial success. This insight and advice are also shared during the Inceptions Podcast episodes. Please join me in congratulating and thanking our September Business of the Month selection. Inceptions Media for their outstanding efforts and contributions this business provides in order to make Fort Morgan a great place to live, work, and enjoy.
Feel like she knows me. No, we're just here, we're honored, humbled, and blessed to be able to be part of this community. Being born and raised around the areas, we always just seeing the evolution of how stuff is going. So our mission is to empower and inspire small business owners to not even grow, but to be able to thrive as well. So I appreciate you guys for having us here.
Nice job. I don't know if you got anything to say?
Yeah, so appreciate it, guys. Thanks for letting us be here today.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a presentation by the Arc of Northeast Colorado.
My name is Candace Kramer, and I'm with the Arc of Northeast Colorado. Thank you for having me here tonight. The Arc of Northeast Colorado was formerly known as the Arc of Weld County, up until about a year and a half ago, when it incorporated the six northeastern counties in addition to Weld. So with the inclusion of the extra counties, it changed its name formally. So what is the Arc? It's a national organization of about 700 chapters, and there's 15 in Colorado. Much of the rural areas are not associated with a chapter, and the Arc of Colorado provides coverage of those areas. It was nationally founded in the 1950s by a group of parents concerned about the institutionalization of children with developmental disabilities and intellectual disabilities. The Arc of Northeast Colorado was founded in 1992 by local mothers and really advocating for their children, and it's funded largely by the Arc thrift stores. So when you shop or donate to the Arc thrift store, you're helping our services be free of cost for the people that we serve. And our mission is to promote and protect the rights of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities through empowerment, advocacy, and community outreach. Who do we serve? Although historically, the Arc of, the Arc has served people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, which is defined by a full-scale IQ with a neurological condition, as stated by the state of Colorado, or adaptive behavior composite with qualifying neurological conditions. Both the full-scale IQ and the adaptive behavior have a confidence interval. But most importantly, we understand that the need is a need. So if an individual doesn't meet those criteria with an intellectual level below 70 or 80, I believe, then the Arc of Northeast Colorado is able to help support with the individual or family to connect with appropriate resources. Many times, individuals and families don't know where to begin, so they start with us, and we're able to help navigate systems. What do we do? Well, individual advocacy is one thing that we do. It's, we work largely in schools with IEPs and 504. So if a student and family is having difficulty with getting their needs met in the school, I go in and am an advocate in the school system, sit with the parent, and identify goals to meet the needs. And out here in the six counties, we don't limit it to intellectual and developmental disabilities. It's any disability. So I serve children from anywhere with dyslexia to Down Syndrome. It's a wide, wide variety of needs that we cover. Individual advocacy is not legal advocates. We're not, we don't have the legal background, but we connect people to the Disability Law Colorado if there is a need for legal advice. We're not decision-makers. We work with a person instead of for, and we're not special education experts, but we have plenty of background in the area. For example, I was with the Envision Connection for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities before. I was with the Arc of Northeast Colorado, which is the, like, the Community Center Board for Weld County. So each of us has a unique background that makes us able to support people. Individual advocacy is support to address concerns and barriers. We're collaborators and connectors with other community agencies. We work hard to get to know the community resources in all of the areas that I serve so that we can make referrals when necessary, and we receive referrals from other agencies. And we do system navigation. For example, if someone's having difficulty with case management through NECal, with the Medicaid waivers, we can help with that system navigation as well. Community outreach is another thing that we do. I'm not sure if... This is a picture of the family retreat that we do in the summer. It's Families in Action. We invite at least 10 families up to the mountains to have time where the children are connected one-on-one with a volunteer that provides childcare during, during that time and assists them with their needs while the parents have respite or have educational sessions with the Arc of Colorado and the Arc of Northeast Colorado. It's by referral only, and it fills up fast, and we, but we always try to save a couple of spots for our, our people in the Northeast. If you know of anyone that would benefit from some respite and some time, like a camp-like experience, we're here to provide that free of cost as well. Here are a couple of community outreach things that we've done. Unified basketball is one of the, the things that we're really trying to promote in the area where there's, athletes are the people that are considered to be the person with a disability, and a participant is a person without a disability. They play together, one, they play together on the team. And we had a tournament in Brush in February of this year. To, I believe, over 100 people attended the tournament, with over 100 people also playing in it. We have a pool party in Sterling. We would like to expand an activity like that to Fort Morgan, whether it's bowling or some other, other activity for people with disabilities that we serve. We're at the Community Resource Fairs, and we sponsor events like Chance to Dance. Does anyone have any questions for me tonight?
Candace, how do you promote locally? For a lot of folks, they don't know Arc is out here.
Sure. I have been promoting on Facebook. We do the, the bulletin board, and then we also buy advertising on Facebook. And then I try to schedule buddy meetings, so organizations that might have a connection to us, I try to get their resources in their hands as well to be able to connect others to us.
Are you partnering with United Way Family Center, share all of the local folks so that they...
So far, I've met with United Way. I need to schedule times to meet with others as well. I just started at the end of January, so.
In the past, the Arc used to do pickup of property, furniture.
Hmm.
Is that offer still available?
Unfortunately, they, with COVID, I believe they changed some of the, the things that they do around pickups in the rural areas, and I don't believe that's an option anymore. We're trying to encourage that to resume, though.
Do you have a drop-off area, anywhere Fort Morgan or Brush or the...
I don't believe so. Yeah. The Arc thrift store and the Arc of Northeast Colorado are connected but separate, so we, I will relay the message that they would like us to have a drop-off location or, or...
That would be helpful, and instead of having to go too really to drop it off, maybe. Because I'm sure there's a lot of people that would really, you know, able, interested in contributing.
Yeah, that would be, I agree. I, I live out in Holyoke, and I, even out there, it would be nice to have someone come that way, too. This is the information to contact, the, the Arc, my, my contact information and my supervisors. And may I give you a brochure?
Were there any, were other, are there any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Right now, I have a caseload of about 10 individuals that I was just in an IEP meeting and meeting this morning, and I have a couple of families that I'm helping in the Brush and the area. So anytime if you know of anyone that's struggling with their IEP or Bible courses, just let me know, and they can get ahold of us online. There's a referral form online also on our website.
All right. Well, thanks a lot. I appreciate you coming to inform us, let us know what you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, next is presentation, possible action on bids for banking service. Ms. Edson.
Mayor, since my bank is part of this bid, I will recuse myself.
All righty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As several of you probably know, Wells Fargo recently closed their Fort Morgan branch, and Wells Fargo has been our main operating account, and we still needed to find somewhere to deposit cash and checks. So we went out to bid in June, or we opened a bid in June for banking services. We had three banks that submitted bids: Bank of Colorado, FMS Bank, and BMO. So all three banks came back and offered analysis credits, which would fully offset the fees for the banking. So this isn't like your normal bid situation where we're going to try and find the lowest bidder because cash isn't really exchanging hands. We really wanted to focus on a couple of things and make sure we found a bank that was going to work for our operation moving forward. So historically, the city has made an effort to bank with almost every bank in town so we can diversify our risk and have funds at different banks. Bank of Colorado is the only bank right now locally that we don't have any accounts with. And in, in the bid documents and meeting with all of the banks, we really appreciated all the, they offered all the services that we were looking for, and we think that they'll be a good fit for us. Plus, then we can add funds to a bank that we currently don't have any funds with. So our recommendation is that we choose Bank of Colorado for our banking services for our main operating account. What questions do you have?
Any additional questions or comments?
Sounds sensible.
In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution accepting Bank of Colorado.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution accepting Bank of Colorado for our banking services.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Doug Sasha, and a second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right.
Doug, make sure he has a napkin. He's back there eating chicken.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he went and got him. He went and got him.
Hey, Jeff.
All right, next is Presentation Possible Action on a Resolution Approving Reimbursement on Certain Expenses for the Construction of the Wastewater Expansion Project. Mr. Nation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. As we got into the discussions about bonds and financing and everything with our bond counsel and our consultants on our financing, one of the things that came up was the discussion about if we do bonds on any of our projects, we can sometimes go back and allocate past expenses of that project towards the bonds if we need to. The reason they brought this up is that when we take out bonds for something, there's always the requirement that we carry a certain amount of cash in reserve as part of the bond covenant. And so when we get specifically into the wastewater project, we want to make sure that we have enough of that cash on hand to cover the situation that we need to make us bond compliant as we move forward with those bonds. So the wastewater fund is one of those that we're, you know, on that edge of having enough cash, not knowing what the cash amount we need is. And so one of the recommendations that bond counsel made was to pass this resolution, and then that will allow us, if we need to, allocate expenses from this year specifically for engineering, because we're spending several million dollars on engineering work this year, we might be able to allocate those towards the bond money, which is a creative way of allowing us to then make sure that we have money in reserves for this. And so this is just a simple resolution that is basically saying that we may have expenses that may fall into this category, and we may allocate them and move them over. It's, it allows us to be compliant with all of our, you know, requirements with our auditors and everything like that. So it's one of those that we may not need this, but we want to have it in place in case we do. So they were asking that we bring that to you and get it in place before we actually take the steps on going after the bonds and doing all the work on the bonds. So that's what you have tonight, is this resolution, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I guess for us, for me, I won't speak for anybody else, the new, these kinds of large construction projects, do we always take out these bonds on those?
So the city hasn't had bonds on anything since the last time we built the wastewater.
Okay, all right.
Or the water plant, and those were done back in the 90s. And so this is, some of this is new to me also. And so I get more of my bond education from MEAN at our MEAN meetings. MEAN is constantly working with bonds on some of the large power plants that we're involved in and things like that. And we have lots of discussions about bond coverage and, and all of that, and understand the importance of having the money on hand to cover your bond covenants, making sure that your issuers of your bonds are happy with where we are financially. And so this is just a little, in my mind, kind of a technicality thing to have in place to get us to where we need to be when we actually take out the bonds next year.
Thanks, man. Any additional questions? If not, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution to approve Resolution 2025-0901, approving reimbursement of certain expenses for the construction of the wastewater expansion project.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by John Caper, a second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, all righty. Next is Presentation Possible Action on First Reading Ordinance 1317, rezoning the Bijou subdivision from R2, medium-density residential. Do planned unit development and request to set a public hearing for September 16th. Mr. Aker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Bijou subdivision, Acadia Farms, is desiring to rezone their whole subdivision from R2 to PUD. Currently, it's for a single family, but R2 also allows duplexes on the lots, but it's more of a, you buy one duplex, rent one duplex. They are thinking that they'll see more activity if they're able to rezone the lots and make smaller lots and have some duplex units along with the single-family units. So what they're, which is still keeping with part of the R2 zone district is similar to the Acosta subdivision to the west, where it'll have some duplexes and smaller alley-loaded homes along with the single-family residents. So this is the first reading. More of the details was in your packet, but they're simply requesting a rezone to PUD, and then they will do a replat to formalize everything once the zoning is complete. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Will this change, Tom, the amount of, you know, it will increase the density?
It's going to increase the density. The Phase 1 becomes, instead of 96 lots, 117 lots, and the overall subdivision becomes 326 units or 3.75 units per acre. It'll be similar to what would eventually happen to the west.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, my question, planning commission. Any comments from them?
Planning commission really had no, no questions that were substantial. They, they recommended approval.
Okay, in that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I may approve or offer a resolution approving the ordinance 1317 on first reading and set a public hearing for second reading on, for September 16th, 2025 for case 2505-PUD, R2 medium-density residential to be planned. Unit development, as was recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Doug Sasha, a second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, next is Presentation Possible Action on the First Reading Ordinance 1318, PUD amendments for Riverview Commons and request to set a public hearing for September 16th.
Again, Mayor and members of council, this is a request that comes from the developer. They've changed their name, but still got many of the same partners involved. Also, the city recognized some things need to be updated in the PUD. The major things that are happening is landscaping plan will be approved via staff instead of bringing it in front of planning commission and the council. That's how a lot of things are done nowadays. And then also Section 14 of the PUD covering the storage areas. The new, they've got a new builder that is doing stick-built homes, and he would like the option to put the hot water heater and the HVAC in the crawl space, which would require some amendments to allow more electrical hookups in the area for the crawl space. And also, they have changed, and many of the units have entrance to the crawl space via inside, whereas the original PUD had it coming in from the outside. And then we did some general cleanup, and then this final, or I won't say final PUD, this PUD version has all the original PUD elements in it that remain in place. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, make a resolution approving ordinance 1318 on first reading and set a public hearing for second reading for September 16th, 2025 for case number 2506, PUD amending the Riverview Commons subdivision, PUD as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Doug Sasha, a second by Jim Parks, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you, Tom.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing for ordinance number 1316, approving the electric rate adjustments and budget billing of the electric tariff. The city council will be acting in its capacity as the Board of Directors of the City of Fort Morgan Electric Electricity Distribution Enterprise. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before the Board of Directors. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens in which a vantage time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, it was posted on the website July 31st.
Next is Presentation of the Ordinance by Mr. Linton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. August 19th, we brought the first reading of this ordinance to your attention. So tonight, I'm asking for the ordinance 1316, some ordinance adjusting electric rates for the Electric Department and System Enterprise of the City of Fort Morgan.
All right, next we'll hear public comments. Anybody here who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. We did have one comment from an elderly citizen over the phone. She didn't want to mention her name. She just was concerned that it's already hard to make her means meet, and she is a widow, and she is hoping that she'll be able to have access to a waiver or any of a hardship application. And it was mentioned to her that there is the LEAP program, and I'm supposed to call her how the result is after tonight.
All right, thank you. Now we proceed to board discussion. Any questions from the board or any discussion of the board? If there's no further discussion by the board, I'd entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
So I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Jeff Morford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Next is council action.
Yes, thank you. Mayor is sitting as chairman. The Board of Directors of the Electric Department and System Enterprise of the City of Fort Morgan held duly proper public hearing, and the recommended action is on page two of your agenda.
All right, so I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution on ordinance 1316, approving an increase to the City of Fort Morgan electric rates effective with bills issued October 1st, 2025, and authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by Lauren Boyette, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, next on the agenda is 2025 budget calendar. Mr. Nation.
Okay, here we are. We're in the home stretch, I promise. Okay, tonight we have, we'll start off with the self-insurance fund, and I'll have Casey and Jennifer come up, and they'll take you through those parts of the budget.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. As Brent said, we are here to go over the self-insurance fund tonight. The first portion, I think, that's in your packet would be the revenue portion. As you can see on the top portion, we are leaving those currently, right now, where they were set for the 2025 budget. And then going into the miscellaneous revenue, these ones are obviously projections that we kind of take into account of how the past losses or reimbursements that we've received. So, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, all right, so we will go into then the next portion, which I believe on your sheets is for 038, 605 for the health insurance. It starts with the healthcare program expense. We'll kind of just go line by line. We have made an increase to the 2026 budget for the first line item. These are all the medical claims that we pay out for each one of our insured, as well as our Arc's benefits, which is through our prescriptions. The next line, we're going to keep our premium for our stop loss where it has been. Life insurance, that is the portion that we provide, like the premiums that we pay for the provided insurance for our employees as one of their benefits, as well as the short-term disability that's down a little further. The health insurance admin costs, we are seeing an increase in that. That's where we pay our brokers out of, as well as our EAP that we provide for our employees, the Employee Assistant Program, as well as Discovery, which monitors our HSA, FSAs, and Cobra. The next line is the employer-paid HSA. So we do match up to a certain dollar amount for anybody that contributes into the HSA. Dental, we're leaving the same voluntary fire, this is for the firefighters that we provide for the life insurance and disability, which we are seeing a slight increase on that. The short-term disability, as I mentioned, is the employer-paid portion that we provide to employees. So those are obviously based off of the wages that each employee makes. The next one is going into, I think everybody knows, insurance keeps going up, right? So our property and casualty, and our deductible portion is from SIRSAS, so we have seen an increase in that. The premium for the airport liability, an increase in that, as well as the boiler and machinery, our workman's comp, and then we're leaving our deductible for the workman's comp and, yeah. Anybody have any questions about these?
Any questions?
And we're, we're still working off of estimates, but these are our best guesses from what our providers are telling us at this point. So we can hope that they over, you know, guessed when they gave us those estimates, and they come in better next year. But for, to make the budget work, we needed to have a conservative guess from them. And so these are, these are the best that we can come up with from the numbers that we've got from our providers.
One question I have is, based on some of it that's going up, do we see an increase by chance to the employee?
We have not made that determination. We'll meet with Hub, our brokers, and kind of determine that when we do our open enrollment meetings with them.
Any other questions?
And when, and when is that?
What is what?
When is our open enrollment?
Open enrollment is that we do each year in October. That's when employees can, yep, select their benefits for the next.
So it's coming up soon.
Yep. Any other questions?
Anything else for Jennifer? All right, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to talk about perpetual care just a little bit. This is not a very big budget, so should be a quick discussion. This has to do with money that's received over at the cemetery, and I will let Matt handle this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Brent said, yeah, I'm here to present the perpetual care. You'll note that the balance of the reserves at the end of 2024 was $829,300. Just for knowledge sake, perpetual care for every lot sold or niche sold, it's a 70%, 30% split, 70% into general fund, 30% into the perpetual care. This is different than most years. We're actually asking to utilize $250,000 out of that perpetual care account next year to build out the rest of the Colombarium. We are... We are looking at significant, uh, cost increases to those units, so the ability to potentially build it out and be done with it, and not have to worry about what we're going to incur over the next ten to fifteen years, at the same time of not, this allows us to take some compression out of the general fund, uh, capital improvement plan. We won't have to pull out of that fund as well. So that's what we're asking, uh, that's why I'm up here tonight, basically, presenting to take that money out of there. To my knowledge, I haven't been able to find anyone to tell me when we have accessed this account ever, so I'd argue that this is what it was for, and I think it's an excellent cause. Any questions?
Alright, any questions or anything from Matt?
Yeah?
Excuse me.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
How much, how much expansion do you have in that columbarium area?
Six units, six units.
Oh, you could, four units, okay.
Six more units at, at our current, uh, numbers, that's three to five years per unit, so we're looking at putting ourselves easily, you know, twenty to thirty years down the road before we have to find out what's next, or if this is still the ticket. But again, it's been, we've been absorbing multiple increases a year from the provider of these over the last two to three years, so with what's coming down the pike, it just seemed like now's the time to, uh, secure the investment. This will also alleviate the need to force those additional costs onto the public in tenure.
And you're looking at thirty years, that before they would, it would be filled, so wow.
Unless, unless zombie apocalypse, unless the zombie apocalypse hits and we've got to make some interesting decisions, yeah.
You might not make a deadline.
Let's not get in a hurry on that one.
No, with our, with our current projections, uh, every niche, three to five years, uh, three years and an extremely, uh, heavy usage year, five years on average.
I, I think it's a great time to invest in that, especially for that duration.
Yep.
Alright, anything else? Alright, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, very good. Uh, we'll have Casey come up, this is the last, um, budget presentation, this is, we'll hit on the general fund revenues. Now that we're through all the general fund, we'll go back and hit all the revenues and go over that, so turn it over to Casey.
Alright, there's a lot of line items here, so I'm just going to hit on the major changes, and if you guys have questions on other things, I'm happy to answer them. So we'll start out with property taxes. I did a two, two percent increase over twenty twenty-four, um, increased it to two point six million, and I just got the letter from the assessor's office, and we're right in line with what we're looking at for, um, for assessed value in twenty twenty-five, so I think that number is pretty, pretty solid. Um, I took a three percent decrease in sales tax. So far in twenty twenty-five, we're seeing a six percent decrease year over year from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, so we're, we're hoping that'll turn around a little bit, but I am still budgeting a decrease. Um, I'm also budgeting a, a decrease for use tax revenue. Um, we had some large, large construction projects in the, in the last couple of years that have really bumped those numbers up, and we're just not sure that we're going to see those large construction projects in twenty twenty-six. Um, and then a lot of these others, um, occupational tax and mobile lunch cart fees, I just took based on actuals, building permits, I kind of took some averages in there, basically based on where we are twenty twenty-five year-to-date and where we ended up last year. That's kind of hit or miss, depending on what the building projects are looking like as well. Um, road and bridge, based on actuals from twenty twenty-four. I put a note in there for in-lu on electric, um, I actually want to change what my note is, I just based that on the actuals from twenty twenty-four as well. So with those in-lus, I'm just taking based on where we've been, just trending it out. Let's see, the next large one is other federal grants. We are expecting an FFA, FAA, sorry, grant for the airport for, um, a new airport apron. So that's what that large increase is. Um, and then state grants, you'll see a large decrease. Um, in twenty twenty-five, we had a large housing grant that was a pass-through grant, that was five million dollars, so we're not expecting that again, so took the state grants back down. And then once we start getting down to, um, our fees for different things, uh, I didn't spell out each one, but the rec department is looking to change some schedule of fees items, which we will discuss at the next meeting, so for specifics on those, we'll, we'll bring the schedule of fees, but I did increase them based on where we think fees are going to be, and the same when we jump down to the golf revenue. Um, just adjust some schedule of fees, as we've done a lot of improvements at the golf course. And those are really our main changes that I've put in. Any questions on any of that?
Any other questions for Casey? Alright.
Right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll, that wraps up tonight's discussion, and like she indicated, at the next meeting, uh, we will go through schedule of fees and the changes that are being requested on any of the fees that the city collects, and then we also will bring any, uh, changes to the budget that any of the department heads. We've been doing this since June, and a few things get caught as we go through the process, and so we'll bring schedule of fees to you, and then any of those changes, right now, I think there's only two or three changes that we've been notified about, and so, and that'll wrap up and then move us towards the official adoption process, so, thank you very much.
Alrighty, next are bids, meetings, and announcements.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so for bids, we have the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six weed and snow removal services, uh, and that bid is due September ninth by three PM, and then we also have our twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, uh, DOLA proposal, and we are closing on that at three PM on September twenty-fifth. The Planning Commission is planning on having a meeting September eighth at four thirty here at City Hall, the Airport Advisory Board meeting September tenth at twelve PM, Historic Preservation Board is having a meeting September eleventh at four PM. That's all for now.
That's all. Alright, reports by officials and staff.
Um, just got a couple of things for you tonight. Uh, did want to let you know that we, uh, myself and a couple of staff members and our engineers met with the county commissioners this morning, they had a public hearing on the special use permit for the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and, um, got through that public hearing, um, and the commissioners passed that, so we, that cleared that hurdle with the, the county government to move forward with the expansion work at the wastewater plant, so wanted to let you know about that. Um, and then I was just going to give a, a quick update on the incident that took place out at the airport this weekend, the tragedy. Um, first of all, our thoughts and prayers go out with the, the individual that lost her life out there, and the families of those that were involved, um, in the crash itself. At this point, the NTSB has finished their investigation, they were done with that this morning. Uh, the next phase of that moves into where they have a company come out and, and pick up all of the wreckage and debris, that is then moved to a facility where it's kept until the investigation is complete and all the findings are reported. So at this point, the runway will remain closed until they're done with that removal. Uh, we are contacting, um, our engineers, um, with RS and H to have the runway looked at, there was some damage from the, the crash to the runway, doesn't look very severe, but we want them to take a look at that. But it looks like we should be able to have the main runway reopened on Thursday, and at this point, uh, the investigation is in the hands of the NTSB. We, it, sometimes those take a while, and so, um, trying to stay out of the speculation game about what happened, but just keeping in mind that somebody did lose their life out there, and that is never a good thing, so, um, with that, that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Alrighty. Chief?
I'll be brief as well. Um, just wanted to bring a couple of things up. September eleventh, which is next Thursday, will be our last five-year strategic plan meeting that will be in the public, the public's invited to the police department, uh, that'll be at seven o'clock, and, um, again, everybody's invited to help steer us in the direction the community wants us to go for the strategic plan. Um, and then the other thing is, we have a Citizens Academy coming up, deadlines for application is September thirtieth, but it begins October seventh, goes through November eighteenth. It's every Tuesday from six to eight, I know a lot of you have been through the Citizens Academy before, including Pete, but, um, it's always very well-received, a lot of people are interested, and it is, it is, does work alongside Brush Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. We do a lot of fun things, um, talk about constitutional law and some of those things, but also canine demonstrations and use-of-force shooter simulators and different things like that, firearms training, a bunch of different things that, um, subject people to what law enforcement is like, so I'd like to invite everybody from the public to apply for that and hope to see people there.
Alrighty, anything from staff in the back? Alright, next on the agenda is an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real or personal, or any other property interest under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for A. The following additional details are provided for identification purposes, purposes, um, purposes, potential land sale. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn and go to executive session.
You're going to make that motion?
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion by Caper, a second by Boyette, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.